We'll call this regular meeting of the Argus School Board to order at 7:01. And if you'd all stand, Kirk is going to start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll follow the pledge, and Kirk, with a moment of solace. Okay, item number three, communication from patrons. So open the floor, yes. State your name, please, Catherine.
Oh, somebody might not know me. I'm Catherine Thompson, and I'm a grandma. And I wanted to say for the board, I go into those bathrooms, and I really don't think in all the years my kids and grandkids were here, I never walked into such a beautiful place. I think.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good thing you.
You go in the women's?
I'm not going in the manager, I go in the.
Well, the men's, you should go in there. I'll take you in there afterwards. Debbie will go with us.
Any other comments? Yes.
I just wanted to thank the board. I think we have three board members going off, and he to the entire board, and to the three members going off, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your service. It's not always an easy task to be on the school board. I mean, sometimes they are very difficult, so just to make, I hope you guys have upheld the school and the student. It's been fun, and I just appreciate that, and I appreciate all of your service. Thank you.
Moving on to item number four. We have some slides that Ned's going to speak about, about accomplishments, Argus accomplishments on this current past year.
Well, as we're ending 2018, and I included 2017, the last part of that, the spring part of it, what's been happening, it's, we're finally ending 2018 here, and things are being finished. I just wanted to run through some of the really amazing things that have taken place in, in Argus, and we'll talk about it. So we negotiated, we had a new contract with our teachers for a two-year contract, which was unusual and was very productive, and some of the bullets there, the salary increases for our teachers, extracurricular schedule additions with our advanced classes, and our master's degree in reading, academic needs, a couple other things, corporation testing, auditory manager, next slide. Sometimes you just have to do a little review of what all has happened in the last while. We did boiler replacements, appropriating a lot more efficiency and saving a lot of energy with the boiler replacements. Window weather seals replaced, that's also been very energy efficient. A year ago, it's about a year ago at this time, we did painting in gym three, and doors, and secondary hallways. We did paving, driveways, and striping, reestablished the administrative office, reestablished the elementary office. We did carpeting in the rooms listed there, and it's a sort of precursor to the major project that's coming up. Next slide, we instituted a new evaluation system to make it consistent for all employees. It's an Argus Modified Rise Evaluation System, and it has four categories for all our employees, highly effective, effective, needs improvement, and satisfactory. And we have a Standards for Success Software Evaluation System that goes with that. We've established new Argus School calendars. We've been recognized as the AP TIPIN, School of the Year nomination, and Teacher of the Year nomination, the second one for two years in a row, and that was by Notre Dame recognizing Argus, and many, many schools in it. We are certainly one of the smallest, but most highly recognized. Congratulations to Argus and our kids and teachers. College Board, top four AP school, library fair, library book fair, actually, that's the largest profit we've ever had, just concluded. Established the Argus Academy, alternative program for our challenged students and credit recovery, staff education classes, new signage and graphic, safety graphics. Enter our buildings, you'll see the new safety graphics. Main entrance, elementary exterior sign. A new thing is just developing Argus history photograph display outside the main gym. Updating district website to campus suite, using data to drive growth and construction. Facility needs assessment was done in October 2017, and the teacher academy was established somewhere in 2018 for our teachers. Our teachers actually came to school for a couple weeks, and very productive. Actually, they volunteered their time for a very small stipend. We had ninety-some percent of our teachers come during the summer, so that's very impressive by our teachers, so I compliment that. Financial stability is one thing that I really felt was important, and the board felt it's important. I feel like we've really achieved that. Stable 2017, 18, and 19 budgets accomplished, we'll talk about that a little later. We just got our budget order for the state today for 2019, so we're still working through details on that. But we reversed our general fund, we've increased our rainy day fund, our cash reserves are increased, we're gonna talk a little more about that when we look at the end of 2018. Redone our sound system in gym one, and we also made the college board AP district honorable, so lots of honors with our advanced placement classes. We had all-state marching band participants. Next slide. Quite a few FFA things there, Quiz Bowl, forestry, senior team, dairy judging, dairy showmanship, dairy foods, national team placed thirds. We started our lacrosse program, it's lacrosse club, boys soccer sectional championship, developed the chess club. Next slide, I think we've got some more coming here. Scholarships, we gave out over forty-four thousand scholarships, marching band first place at the Blue River. And we had a student win, the W.B. Hawkins winner for the Bye County Created Elementary, that's a repeat. Summer remodeling projects, we're actually just completed those recently. Brand-new security on all our entrances, all our hallways, all our cameras, remodeling the paint, carpet, ceilings. Big thing was our restrooms are bringing up to code, we appreciate the comment on that. And yes, a lot of that work will never be seen, but it's been very quality work, because something interesting about the Argus schools, many schools back in the day were built this way, there's tunnels under this school, and all the pipes and all everything goes under. Well, we found out that we've been, those pipes have been leaking and running water into those tunnels for a long time, and those repairs are done, and that's gonna help us with our energy a lot. One of the pipes was a hot water pipe and just ran all the time till we got it repaired. So some excellent work behind the scenes is gonna help the whole school team. Etymology team, cast and tourney champs in basketball, WSB TV, I Love to Read winner, three years, FSSA certification by state for preschool and preschool addition, robotics team went to state, kickboards, minds in motion, implemented random acts of kindness, implemented steam knives, science, technology, arts, and math, geography bee, spelling bee. One more. There's the one, new ADA compliant restrooms, and really, we did not meet code for handicapped children and that, and so we do now, and that's a big step forward for the school. Established the student commons center, did the interior graphics, we mentioned new camera security, did the main hallways, carpet base, and painting. As we did this project, we removed the asbestos, so the asbestos was painted and removed. Replaced the leaking pipes in the tunnels, we mentioned that. We completely redid the weight training room, so now it meets code, and it's a very nice place for our athletes and staff to work out, and then the ADA compliance again. We redid the HVAC, the heating and cooling here in the library, new agriculture furnace, brought our ceilings up to codes. Interesting thing, our old ceiling tiles were not code compliant, now the new ceiling tiles are. And when they, I'm sure when they were installed back in the day, they were code compliant, the codes changed over the years. Upgraded the lighting in the hallways and areas. Partnership with town on having a school security officer, resource officer, and we're working on that, and trainings begin. We have a Homeland Security Grant for our, for our security officer, so we're looking forward to implement that as we enter 2019. And we just had an audit on our security plans and our new security things, and state of Indiana gave us a first-class pass on our security audit for Argus schools, so that's very good. And we are completing an auditorium needs assessment, and we'll soon have the final report on that to be shared. Is that the end of my list?
This is your last one.
This is my last one. Left off with girls soccer. Yeah, I think it's coming. Second one. They were two different years, so they got two slides. Forestry team, second place, and I probably left off a lot of things, but I didn't try to. First, team second place at state, in the elementary, girls soccer sectional championship. We had two cross-country regional qualifiers. We finally disposed of our old boilers, we got rid of some obsolete records, about fifty years of them, disposed of them properly. U-903 teacher nomination, two years, RMC Operation Roundup Award, and STEM partnership with the Geneva Center. And I'm sure I left somebody off the list, but the point is, lots of good things happening at Argus, and I'm really proud of superintendent to compliment our students, our staff, our community, parents, the whole crew, because this is good stuff. And probably the one thing I would criticize, it's sort of a well-kept secret, we need to broadcast what's, what's here for children, and what children can experience here. It'd be a great education going to Argus. Lord, I just want to say thank you. And with that, there's three of you here, but this is your last official meeting. Doesn't mean we won't continue to work, expect you to continue to work for Argus, but I do want to recognize the three of you, and jump in at any time, Mr. President, David. First of all, Doug? About three and a half years, the way I figure. 2015, 2018.
More than that, doesn't it?
Yeah, I understand. Congratulations and thank you. And Brett?
Eight and a half years?
Yep.
Is that correct? 2010, 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. And Kirk, by your extra stint here, you actually got around by a few.
2009 to 2018.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? I want the superintendent just to say thank you to all of you. I really believe the district's moving the right direction. I'm proud of all our accomplishment, accomplishing. And I really look, 2019's only gonna be better, and Lord's gonna be accomplished. We're on a roll, and we want to intend to stay there. Thanks, I appreciate it. Mr. President, that's all I have on that.
I'll just echo Ned, I appreciate you guys too, learned a lot in the two years that I've been on the board from you guys. I've got a lot to learn yet, but. Hey, you ought to be great.
There's always more to life.
I know. Okay. Item number five, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from November 19. Do I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the minutes for the regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Number six, personnel changes. I think they're gonna come up on this.
Yeah, we're gonna put them up here, and.
There we go, that's bigger. So we have two employments and two resignations.
If I could just mention a little bit on the appointment, Elizabeth Schmelz is coming to us from retired guidance counselor from John Glenn. It's a temporary position, we have a medical leave and an eternity leave, but I'd also like to introduce the board, and want him to say something if you so approve, but recommend Jeff Chick. He is our new technology leadership director. Jeff's coming to us from Purdue University, where he's currently working. Before that, he taught biology at Hebron, and he taught at Prince L.A., he's been a high school teacher, a junior high and middle school teacher, teaching professors and kids, or whatever Purdue assigns you to, Jeff. We welcome you aboard, and so that would be our two employments, and we have a couple resignations with some paraprofessionals, one retiring and one moving, and we recommend approval of our personnel this time.
Got a motion?
So.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Jeff Chick.
Jeff's gonna offer, you wanna say anything?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm really humbled to have this opportunity. I really look forward to working with teachers and students to create just amazing learning experiences and partnering to really figure out ways that we can use the technology that's already here in innovative ways. And I knew that it was the right decision when I showed my eight-year-old son the mascot here, and he's like, "That's really awesome."
Deal.
Yeah. Thank you, and welcome. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes.
Okay, our next item is a reminder to everyone that the January board meeting is moved up earlier, one week earlier than normal. It will be Monday night, January 14th, and that's due to, we have to reorganize and have the new year, all the red tape and state laws by the 15th. So we have to move the board meeting upward. Item number eight, approval of renewal rates for the 2019 property casualty insurance with escrft, can I say?
Escrft.
Escrft.
E-S-C-R-F-T. And we put a slide up here, board, of what our quote is on this, but the real good news, about halfway down, where it says 2019 renewal cost, right underneath, you see in parentheses there, minus fifteen percent. Well, I think all of us know when other insurance rates go down fifteen percent, it's a good day, which means we've had a very good year experience-wise, and being in this consortium with a bunch of other school districts, very good news. And over the years, we have saved a lot of money being with this consortium. So I would recommend renewal of our liability and transportation, all our insurances, not health, not on employees, but for the school district, our liability and our protection and our transportation insurance. Minus fifteen percent, recommend approval for 2019.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or further questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Item number nine, approval of administrative contracts for the next two years, it looks like, next two school years.
Board, I sent this in your packet, recommendations on our administration team, and Indiana has an interesting law that administrative contracts automatically rollover come January 1. So it seems to make sense that the board take action, so it's not just a rollover and that there's an official action on it. So I've given you a recommendation for our principals, our AD slash dean of students, and the contract you just approved for Mr. Chickie, and myself. I have no salary adjustment or anything for myself. If you will, I'd like to be here another year, and so that's the decision there, the salary adjustment for the principals. And a new thing that we're adding is potential of a health savings account for the administrators. If administrators put a thousand dollars of their own money in, then the district will put a match in on health savings account. But if they don't put money in, there's no change on our, on our benefits. Just establishing an opportunity for health savings accounts. As outlined, I'd recommend the renewal of the administrative contracts system.
Okay, we have an opportunity to look those over. Is there a motion? Thank you, Jim. Do you have a second?
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay, any discussion or questions on the administrative contracts?
Are we already in discussions with the HSA, like, is it gonna provide that?
Yes, and we've started that, and we're working through our insurance cooperative with MACE, and to set that up, and so that'll be set up as a district, and then, and that's sort of, as we're going forward, we're going to address our benefits with other employee groups insurance. So this is just leading in what we'll be working with with our other staff members. So, but we want to set that up, so here's how the district handles it, if the employee chooses to participate. That's an "if," because it takes an investment by the employee to get this benefit.
Good question.
Anything further? Okay, we'll call for a vote on item nine, administrative contracts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Item 10, approval of resolution number 2018-002, the sale of real estate.
Board, we, last month, you approved the sale of the lots for the redevelopment commission, and this time, we need a resolution to that effect, since it's been approved, and the attorneys are now starting to work to transfer the deeds and that, and so we need this resolution approved and signed, that basically exactly what you said last month is, it's been in the resolution form to move forward with the state from one nonprofit to another nonprofit. And so the resolution needs to be approved. To, from Argus Community Schools, give bay and warrants to Argus Community Development Corporation, with the exact description and exact numbers that you're, so recommend approval of the resolution and signing it afterwards, if you so approve.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect? And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions concerning the resolution? Okay, call for a vote. All in favor of the resident approving the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
State.
State? Okay, item number 11, approval, 2018 year-end budget closing and transfers.
This is a yearly thing, boards. We close out the 2018 budget, zeros out the accounts, and closes down 2018 budget, so we can do the 2019 budget. But basically, it is the computer program that will bring 2018 to a resolution. There'll be a full report at our January board meeting after we do that, on that, but we'd ask your approval to close out the 2018 year-end budget.
Sounds like a necessary thing.
It is a very necessary.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the year-end 2018 budget?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. 12, construction report. I think we have something to pay.
Yeah, you gotta bill to pay, but. We're right at the end of the construction report, and what we're doing now is, we're at the end of the project, we've got several things left. We've got some paint areas that need to be touched up, we have two doors that need to be replaced. The new doors are actually here, they just need to be rehung, and that's because they weren't finished properly, and so they're getting replaced according to our specifications. So we're right at the end of it, so our architect has certified at current payment due, forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents, and that leaves balance to finish, which is all retainage, which is, retainage is ten percent of the project. We're gonna hold on to that money till everything clears and all that, so the balance in retainage will be eighty-seven thousand and one hundred and fifteen eleven. But this payment, if approved, for forty-two thousand, four sixty-four, sixty-five, is the final construction payment, and that's just when we release the retainage, that these final jobs are done. So I'd recommend approval, since our architect is certified the worksman.
Okay. We have a motion?
Aye, and we approve item five on the construction.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or questions concerning this? So if I understand that correctly, all we will owe will be the retainage thing, yeah?
Right, and so.
At a later time.
And just for the board's information, we are still, we are concluding this project, twenty-five thousand, under the contracted number. So, good news, we're under budget, and we're finishing the project. Real good news for the whole community.
There's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Instructional report.
Yeah, several slides here, board, and some of them will make more sense than others, but I wanted to show you. For the second time in the state's history, the state has released for all school districts of its public information, good states, I look it up for any school district in the state, transfers. Since we're in the transfer business, the schools, for years I did happen, people transfer in, people transfer out. One problem with the state's data, it doesn't add up. So if you try to add numbers, it won't add up. You'll say, "Well, there's missing kids." Well, the reason that is, you've got home-school kids, you've got kids that are on online programs, you've got kids that go to another school district, you've got kids that are, it's just, the parts and pieces don't add up. But it is sort of a snapshot of what's happening. So, for what it's worth, here's what the state put out. I wouldn't build a bank on these numbers, but this is what the state has released to us. If you look at the numbers, and I just gave you the raw numbers, kids that are transferring in from someplace else, from another school district. Actually, if you look at that, those are the numbers by area school districts, but if you want to look at percentages of population, then we jump right up to the top of this, because obviously, Flemish is a lot larger school district, and Ingram is a larger school district, but we certainly are doing well there. These are kids that are coming into Argus every day, into our school district to go to school. So it's an interesting thing. So the next slide, these are kids that are not coming to school here, but they're not all transfer, it says transfer out, but they're not. Let me give you an example, let's say you have an Amish community that doesn't send kids to school, they're in that number. Let me say, say you have people that are home-schooling their kids, they're in that number. Say people that are taking online classes at home, they're in that number. So actually, the number of people leaving is significantly less than that, depending on the district, and if you look at percentages and that. So, for what it's worth, that's what the state has given us on these numbers, but as I said, the numbers are really hard to make sense out of, because there's a lot of different things involved there. And the third slide on this, well, what are the net of those two? And actually, I'm thrilled where ours is, because we have a lot of children that just don't go to public education, they're not transferring anywhere, and so we're winning the transfer battle significantly. But you look at some districts that are not winning that battle so significantly, and if you look at that across the board, Argus is doing very well in that comparison. So, for what it's worth, I just thought I'd share that. And that is, these slides are the main reason our enrollment is increasing. The last two years, our enrollment's increased, and that's because of what's happening on these slides. So even though state's data is not good, it helps us reflect why we are growing. I think we can continue to grow in enrollment because of these slides, and as we keep sharing the good things that are happening for kids in Argus, I think we can continue to grow these numbers. grow these numbers. So, that's the state's information on transfers, okay? And the other one I have on here, we need to approve, we approved the calendar a couple months ago, let's go with that. And since that time, the state of Indiana has decided, the Indiana High School Athletic Association, they're going to rotate everything backwards one week next year. And this really affected a lot of districts because the state didn't realize districts approved their calendars way ahead. So the state's just made the decision, oh, we're going to rotate all our contests, all our sectionals, all our regionals, everything back one week next year. Well, they can do that, but that really affects if we don't take an action on that and other districts are looking at it all around us. All our kids are not going to be able to have a fall break because they're all going to be involved in these activities the week we scheduled for fall break. Now, lines right up, we had ninety-eight kids that couldn't go in fall break if we don't edit our calendar next year. So, do we have a copy of the new calendar?
I don't.
We will put that out tomorrow, so...
Yeah, we're simply moving it...
One week later.
One week later to the week of October twenty.
So we're going to follow the state of Indiana, and I know surrounding districts that we compete with are doing the same thing, to give as many kids the opportunity and coaches and teachers the opportunity to go in fall break, to align with the state of Indiana, and we've known that earlier, so we've done it. So, nothing changes but the moving of fall break next fall, one week later. And I know that's probably going to step on somebody's toes that already has airline tickets or something, but for the greater good, I think we need to do it as soon as possible, and we'll send out the new calendar immediately upon your approval. That's my recommendation, we follow the IHSA A on this calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Now, do we have a motion to approve the calendar edit? I'll call it for change.
So...
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the moving of fall break one week, one week later?
You know, we're totally just putting it back to a timeframe we're used to. If you were here at the other meeting, it actually was a week earlier than we were used to because that's kind of where all the schools had settled. So now we're back to kind of that week of the twentieth, twenty-first. I don't think it's going to be an issue at all.
It won't be a big deal. And basically, you know how calendars work, you gain sort of a day every year and every six, seven years is happening. And you sort of have to align it with when the state does it or it gets to be chaotic. So all we're trying to do is just stay in step, and this should resolve it for another six or seven years, but I think it's a good...
It'll post it this meeting.
Yes, we have it ready to go, so with your approval, we'll get it out there so people can wait for it. Hopefully, next fall seems a long way away, but I'm sure people are starting to wait for it.
Ten months lead and hopefully most people will be okay now. Okay, no further discussion then? Okay, we'll call for a vote on the calendar change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, fourteen, approval of claims.
Good evening. We have a claim docket tonight, five hundred eighty-two thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and three cents. It includes accounts payable and available, so I ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Do we have a motion to approve claims?
I need to approve the claims as presented.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of approving claims? Signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, financial reports. We have some slides to look at.
Yes, we do. We're trying to end two thousand and eighteen, and I want to show the income, and we mentioned this a little earlier, with our growing enrollment. You see the last eighteen and nineteen, we have a tick up in income coming from the state, that's based on our growing enrollment, and we sort of turned the corner on a projection going the wrong direction, that's why enrollments are so important to us. As we look at our revenue from the state of Indiana, and actually the general assembly and the governor are talking about more revenue to small schools, I hope that they follow through with that, they really need to do that, they've not treated small school districts very well the last few years, and I've actually met with a couple of representatives and encouraged them greatly, that they need to address over the hundreds of small school districts in the state of Indiana to help them stay financially solid. So, there's the revenues, we look in two thousand and nineteen, now we'll look as we're closing two thousand and eighteen. Here's our expenditures, eleven twelveths of the way through the year, we're going to be closing out two thousand and eighteen very soon. We're about two percent of the, to the good, and really looks healthy for the general fund. You see an uptick there, one of the reasons you're seeing an uptick there, there are three payrolls in two thousand and eighteen or November, whenever we have, twice a year that happens, there's three payrolls. That tightens it up, but there won't be three payrolls in December, so really as we look ahead, and Jennifer and I were looking at it today, our best projection is we will not use any reserves at all to our best knowledge at this time. Looks like that there will be no need to use any reserves to help the two thousand and eighteen budget. That's really good news because a few years ago, we projected that we'd have to use reserves at a steady pace, and we've not had to do that, we don't want to do that, but the good news is the reserves are there, needed. Because we want to really work hard to live within our means, and I think two thousand and eighteen, board, you've done a good job managing this, I think we're going to be in very good shape in our major fund, the general fund, pays for all our teachers of education. Next slide, the capital projects fund really looks healthy, and we've been able to make some major inroads there. Lot of our energy costs come out of the capital projects fund, and of course we max that out every year, but the more efficient we can be with utilities and that, certainly saves money. This fund is locally supported with property tax, fiscal institution tax, and bank taxes, so yeah, looks very healthy for two thousand and eighteen. And if you look, we were deficit spending, board, great job, and we are not deficit spending, so good job as we close out two thousand and eighteen in the capital projects. And transportation fund, same way, we've been able to manage that, fuel prices haven't hurt us any there, but that certainly helps because that's a big part of the transportation fund, it looks real healthy. So I'm really happy as we end two thousand and eighteen when we talk about financial stability. Here's our rainy day slide totals. As of now, we will project further, at the end of the month when we close, board, you gave us some direction on rainy day, we'll be sharing with our new board in January exactly where that is, but we anticipate that rainy day fund decreasing as we close out the two thousand and eighteen budget. So, good news there. And this is our cash reserves as of today. And you see from three point five to two point seven, you look at an eight hundred thousand dollar project, I'm rounding things off, that's exactly why the difference is, but that will close too as we close out two thousand and eighteen, we have some more reserves took place into this. So, financial stability, that's a huge word to have effective education, and I really compliment the whole Argus community on achieving this because this really makes it possible, of course, to have quality education all the way through the system. Good job. That's our financial report.
Thank you. That brings us to item sixteen, your comments.
I think I shared my comments at the beginning of these. So I'll be the third.
We'll go to board comments. Would you like to start?
Yep, I'll start. Jeff, thank you for being here tonight, looking forward to having you onboard, and you know, all excited about that. Glad to see you have a former teaching background, and you know, teachers will appreciate that and incorporate more and more technology into classroom. Ned, those, that was some accomplishments that we went through, really Ned was the driver behind those. The board sits up here as governance, oversight, and strategy, we don't execute, we're not involved with the day-to-day, and should not be involved with the day-to-day running of the school. So, those items really are a direct reflection of Ned and his administration, and Ned and the teachers on, of what we've been able to get done.
It's been a quite deep effort by the team here, really, but thank you. And I'll accept it on behalf of the whole staff, because everyone's been involved, they really have.
But Ned has driven the bus on a lot of it and brought to us experience that he needed, for example, with getting the evaluations up to date and just a lot of things that needed to be buttoned down, that now I feel like we're in a great place. Brett, Kirk, Doug, the last meeting, it's been fun, I think we've worked as well as the board. Nineteen I came on at a pretty stressful time for the school system, for our teachers, for everyone, right? Yeah, it is what it is, but we're in a lot different places now, and we've managed through that, and we've made a lot of great decisions and put us in a good place to move forward and give our incoming board a little bit different position to enter the board at. Thank you.
Smallst to biggest.
Yeah.
Whatever changes.
I'm not a big speaker, I just thank everybody for the chance to do this. I think that anybody that has kids in schools should at least do one term, one setup, four years. You will look at things a whole lot different. With all these folks up here, I've learned a lot, I think I've shared some of my knowledge due to that. Newcomers, you're going to do things that the public does not like, but you do it for the kids, not for the public sometimes, so. You're going to, there are some sleepless nights probably. Things are growing here, things are growing in our small community, I think the next year, hopefully we will take some great strides, put ourselves in a very good position, I hope, so. Thank you, thank all you. I just want to thank everyone for attending tonight, help us say goodbye to three great guys here, appreciate your leadership, two and a half great years, so am I concerned, thank you guys. I'm letting you two have the last one.
All righty. Well, I wrote mine down, so this shouldn't take too long, but I really have enjoyed my time on the board. I was looking at eight years, only other thing I've ever done for eight years was probably get my bachelor's degree.
That was a tangent. Too shady.
That was an associate's degree and...
Can't mean to insult you, Brett. My fault.
No, I have enjoyed it, that was my first comment. There was a few special years in there that maybe were a little bit more difficult to enjoy, but overall, I think what I went through was an opportunity to grow and learn, and I think that's the best part that I've learned from that spot. I think one thing I've really enjoyed is, as being a board member, strangely enough, I found is the times that I've disagreed, he's always been here, but that side of the table usually, whenever I disagreed with someone on this board, I've enjoyed the fact that I always had to think about that I was probably wrong.
And so, you were.
I, that's, that's actually probably true, but I think what is nice is the fact that the way this has functioned is that we could sit here and disagree. One time right there, Kirk did not, Kirk and I disagreed and he was right, and I think that's what I've enjoyed, actually, it's very easy.
Six or seven, the opposite way.
It's very easy when everything goes well, but I think when we come here and you see us approving things behind the scenes, there's been a lot of thought, especially that position right there, and we have to, you know, we don't vote, but we hear and we say, I don't know if that makes sense, in an individual basis back, and that's why people like Ned make really good decisions for this school. Lastly, I think I wrote them down, I've been here eight years and I wrote down six superintendents. And I think that's, that's somewhat of a challenge, I think I'm speaking to one, the amount of time that many of us have put in outside of our normal time in this period, but I think the six superintendents, while we, Ned's been one of the best. I'd like to say that what I see is, the administration of this school has a hard time screwing it up, because there are teachers that work here who treat kids as if they were their own. There are fans in the stands that treat, that know every kid as if they were their own, and I believe that's why sometimes we act inappropriately, because just like a grizzly bear, your, when it's your kid, it's different. And so I think that's truly one of the reasons why sometimes we do things that are not appropriate. But I think from the teacher standpoint, if you, if you go to that, it's because these people see that kid in that chair as a little one, and that's a great thing, it's one reason we came here, and it was a great decision. Lastly, I've enjoyed working with Kirk. I know that sounds strange, but I really do. There's not been a lot of board members, but I will tell you, this guy, when an issue comes up, he can remember back to two thousand and nine and remember how it was treated as a basis and so on, and so he's very special, and I've enjoyed it.
Thanks, Brett.
Please, next to the evening.
Sounds like you need it.
So, thank you actually for giving me this opportunity, I've enjoyed it.
That's all you got?
Yeah.
I want to be short. It's been an honor, it really has. You think you know what you're getting into when you walk into a position like this, but reality kind of has a way of smacking you in the face sometimes, but you know, it really has been an honor to serve on the board, a roller coaster in certain ways, but nine and a half years well spent is what I would say. This place means a lot, and there aren't a lot of places on the planet that I would describe in that manner. So, thanks for coming out, I hope that everyone continues to support the new board. You know, the, things are headed in a good direction now, but you know, the next challenge is just around the corner, you don't know what it may be, but you've got some smart, dedicated people who've been a part of this board for a long time, you've got some smart, dedicated people who are coming onto this board. In many ways, it's a thankless task, but that's okay. You know, it's not done for accolades, it's not done for personal attention, you know, kids are number one. If you're not here for the kids, then there's probably better ways to spend your time. So, that's all I got. Well, I think we did.